And Paula Jackson. Let me just double check because I think a couple of people changed orders that other people came in. I believe I captured everyone who is here at the meeting. So I think the next item is simply to approve what a very limited agenda that we have, so.
Great, thank you, Mark. Can we take a motion to approve the agenda as sent through yesterday afternoon?
This is Beth Compton, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Beth.
Beth Allen, I'll second.
Thanks, Beth.
Find a new button. Wayne?
Here.
Kendall? Whoops, lost Kendall somewhere. Um, Dana, Chad?
Um, I think, yeah, you got me or not?
Chad there? Okay, Chad, got you. Somewhere in the process, we have lost Kendall and now Dana.
Dana said yes, Chad said yes.
I guess that's a sufficient number of votes to. You know, Martin, we really got, you know, I think a couple of very, you know, focused and singular issues and I do want to. Note that I have a couple of people that have already let me know that, um, I don't know, various people in either Lincoln, Iredell and further over seem to be. On. So.
Okay, thanks a lot. We'll do the best we can. So according to the agenda, Maggie, I'm going to come to you in a second for an update. Looks like CSUSA, North Carolina, you're going to give us an update. So a couple of comments just to set this one up. I think hearing from you guys first is the logical first step, you know, as the EMO, we need to hear from you first. So that to me makes complete sense. I would ask everybody just to be obviously gracious, respectful and concise in our comments. Um, we're all here for the right reasons and we're all here to try and do the right thing. So Maggie will come to you first. Um, once you made your comments, we'd love to hear from members of the board perspectives. Um, then we'll go to Donna, get some feedback from the lawyer and then we'll have a discussion and determine what changes, if any, changes need to be made to help. Help our schools, help our students and our families, teachers and admins and everybody on this screen, everybody watching. Lead through this situation. And then finally, Mark, I know we had a back and forth previously about questions from stakeholders and parents. And I respect that we may not be able to get to all of those questions today, but we do need those questions answered. So I think that we need to do whatever we can to take questions, feedback, comments from those watching on the streams. And if we can get to those questions today, that's great. If not, I do think we need to find a way to capture all of these and give people a forum and an opportunity to ask their questions and to remove, remove the perceived vacuum or the gap that's been out there. So. If we can figure out a way to do that, I don't know how we do that most efficiently today. If we screenshot, somebody wants to screenshot their respective Facebook pages, we give an email address. I'm not sure how best to handle that. I'm open to suggestions, but the, the end outcome here, we need to give people the opportunity to speak, ask their questions and we need to get back with them.
So Mark, you'll be capturing the, the Facebook comments, correct? You've been doing that since we started these social meetings, is that correct?
Yeah, we capture the comments, but they don't come, you know, they aren't kind of synchronous, so to speak. I mean, the, the comments are presented to the board at a, at a later point in time. The, the Facebook live streaming is really not conducive to any kind of immediate access to those, those questions and certainly difficult to, to present them for, for any kind of a, a response. Uh, this, this is actually live streaming on, I think, uh, five different Facebook live pages by the time we're all done. Um, so it's, it's, uh, again, I can collect them all and present them all to the board, but I don't know that we can present them to you in a way that you can respond this evening.
And that, and I do understand some of the limitations. The outcome here is that I just want to capture as much of this as we can and give the people watching an avenue and an option to communicate with us, ask their questions and for us as a collective and for CSUSA specifically to respond to these parents. And give concrete answers to the specific question. So I do understand the limitations. We need to figure out a way that we capture these questions and follow up with votes. All right?
And, and thank you, Tracy. Um, I just saw in the comments that Tracy Biner said she would help us with that. So I do appreciate that. Um, so do you want me to go ahead and jump in at this point, Martin?
Yeah, it's all you, Maggie. Thank you.
All right. Um, so in your packet, we included just a draft of a recommendation that's based on a lot of conversations, some conversations with um, the board chair, some conversations with principals. And basically what we're asking is, um, that we don't necessarily change what the board has approved, but we authorize our principals to make some decisions. So that we don't have to keep coming back and doing these meetings over and over and over. They work with their nurses, they work with the local health department. They work with us and, um, each school is a little bit different. I know each principal has a different concern about if we change. What was decided as a complete overhaul, what that might do to enrollment. We did have some schools that took some hit, um, when the decision was made to be optional. We know there would be a hit to enrollment if we mandate or require. So we're trying to not necessarily completely overhaul the decision that was made. But allow the principals to really, um, respond to the concerns that they have on their campus. I know the two schools that opened. At this point, Cabarrus has had four positive cases. It looks like, um, from the report that you got from Mark on Friday or Saturday, whenever you said that I learned, um, there were seven, but I believe Langtree has had two additional since the weekend, um, of positive cases. So I know they have, um, some concerns and want to make some adjustments while these numbers are high. Um, additionally, when you start looking at our counties that we're sitting in, um, there is a high transmission rate at this point. We are considered um, in Cabarrus, Iredell and Charlotte Mecklenburg, areas of high transmission. So those are some considerations as well. But at this point, our recommendation is to provide our, our principals with some support in making some decisions. Based on the information they have, based on their health department, based on their nurse input. To really support the safety of their schools.
Okay, thanks, Maggie. Any feedback from the board? On that, uh, on the comments from Maggie? Um, and then principals, if you want to speak up at some point today too, you're absolutely welcome to. If you prefer not to, I completely understand. That's okay. I want to give the board a chance to speak and then we'll, we'll go from there.
I was wondering what the, are those the whole, all the numbers, Maggie, from all the schools?
Well, those are only two schools open. Um, we have two more schools opening tomorrow. So at this point, Langtree and Cabarrus are the only ones that have had students.
And so we're talking about a minimal number of cases. How many, um, people did that affect? Like, how many kids do we have out quarantined right now?
Um, I'm going to have to let the principals, um, share that with you. Um, I'm not, I think. I'm just, I'm going to have to let the principal share that with you. Um, I don't necessarily have all the quarantine numbers because I know that Mr. List and Ms. Paget have been having to work through that this weekend. So, um, I'm going to let them speak to the quarantine numbers.
If I could add, just to, to be complete in our picture here, uh, even though West Lake Prep Academy has not started, uh, we did have a staff member, uh, test positive as well as a parent and prospective student, uh, test positive. And that, that information was sent to the Westlake Board here about an hour ago.
I'll add too, that we are, uh, we, Maggie, you mentioned that we have four cases at Cabarrus. We're up to five, um, that fifth being a staff member. Um, and it's affecting forty-nine people in our building, um, about thirty-seven or excuse me, um, forty-seven students and two staff members are now out of our building. After day five.
Before we go through this, can we also understand what the process is for quarantining? What, what, what's, you know, what has to happen before a faculty member or, um, child is quarantined?
Maybe one of the nurses, Lori Hobbs, would you like, or Sarah, would you like to talk about that?
Andrea, thank you. Give us one second. Can we just get the numbers and the principles? And then I want to go to the nurses because Beth, your question is perfect. It's dead on about the impact of this. And Ms. White, thanks for speaking up. If the principals could give us the current numbers and then I would love to open it up to the nurses to talk us through, any of the nurses want to speak up, talk us through what that process is. Um, but I think we need to start with the actual numbers, please.
Um, I can go ahead for Lang Lower. Good evening, everyone. Um, since school started, we have had three, uh, students who have tested positive, two over the weekend. We have had fourteen students exposed and right now Nurse Allison and I are working to contact trace on this very last student to determine if there are going to be other exposures, um, for that particular student.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. This is Principal List, Langtree Upper. Uh, we had five cases prior to the start of the school year. Students had never stepped foot on campus, but notified us before school started. Since we have been back to school on Monday, we've had seven positives, resulting in forty-nine quarantines. Uh, in addition to those seven students, uh, also being out, we are still, um, contacting families that have been impacted and have been all weekend.
Thank you.
And at Concord Lake, we have not started yet and we already have five students that'll be out on quarantine.
Okay, thanks. And then Kim and Kyle, Cabarrus?
Yes, I, um, said, I misspoke earlier when I said we had forty-nine people in quarantine. Um, Nurse Alicia texted me that we actually have fifty-one. So that means we have forty-nine students in quarantine and two staff members in quarantine with a total of five cases, Kyle, I think.
Yeah, three staff members in quarantine, but one comes back tomorrow.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, ma'am.
So for ICA, we've had one, one employee. It did not impact anybody at ICA. So it was just more of an employee before school started.
Okay, good deal. Thanks, everybody. So I would love to go back to Beth's question, the, the process for quarantine. I would love to hear from the nurses and any of the nurses who want to talk through, who've been through this over the last week.
Before the nurse starts, Martin, we just need to clarify that CSUSA had protocols in place before the school was started.
Yeah, we did discuss protocols on July twenty-eighth. We sure did. And, uh, we'll, we'll absolutely come back to that in a second. Just want to hear from the nurses and then we'll, we'll continue on the discussion.
Hi, this is Lori Hobbs. I'm a school nurse at Iredell Charter Academy, um, along with Sarah Hare. So I just want to preface that there are so many nuances. So if I misspeak without having it written down in front of me, um, if you guys could jump in because there is so many little details. But basically, um, just to start off, if there is a positive case, um, that person must isolate for ten days. So that's the part, the, um, positive case who tested positive for COVID nineteen. Then as far as, um, close contacts, the rule still remains the same this year. It is within six feet for fifteen minutes or more per day. So, um, we're trying, the recommendation is to, um, separate by three feet, but the quarantine distance is still six feet. And then if someone is considered a close contact, um, there are three different options and we are in Iredell County. So, um, the Iredell County Health Department, there are three different options. The first being a seven-day quarantine if you want to get tested. So, um, if you are considered a close contact after, um, after five days or more after contact with the person, if you get tested for COVID nineteen and, um, if you test negative, you finish out the two more days for a total of seven-day quarantine and then can return. The next option is a ten-day quarantine and that is, um, after the date of last contact, you quarantine for ten days at, if you choose not to get tested. So it's a total of ten days, but they do strongly recommend that you wear a mask for the remaining four days up to fourteen-day quarantine. And then the final option is a fourteen-day quarantine, which I'm sure we all want to try to do. The ten-day is the, is the same option. Fourteen-day quarantine would just be if you don't get tested and don't want to wear the mask upon returning to school for those remaining four days. Um, there is, there are some adjusted quarantines. If, if student to student, it's called mask to mask. So if, if there is a student who's wearing a mask, who tests positive for COVID nineteen and has been around other students wearing a mask, um, that mask to mask contact, they should not have to quarantine unless they develop symptoms. So that is something that is, uh, new that they came out with in the latest strong schools toolkit, um, which does offer a benefit. But that would have to be if the positive student as well as the student in close contact, if both are wearing masks. And from what I read, that, that only applies student to student because they have not done studies with any other, um, subset. So that is not student to staff, both wearing masks. It's not staff to staff, both wearing masks. That only applies, otherwise the normal quarantine rules apply, but only student to student does that mask to mask adjustment apply? If that makes sense.
Um, I'm Lori. I also was reading, um, about the different options if a student is quarantined, or not quarantined, I'm sorry, vaccinated or unvaccinated.
Yes. Um, so again, uh, we all know that, um, students or anyone ages twelve and up are eligible for the vaccine. So if that is the case, whether it's students ages twelve and up or any staff member as well, an adult who has been fully vaccinated. So it has to be two weeks after the last dose of the vaccine. Um, if they are fully vaccinated and exposed, um, they do not need to quarantine unless they develop symptoms. So we, you don't have to ask for vaccination proof until, I mean, you can if you want to, but you do not have to unless that becomes pertinent. So in that case, if they can provide proof of being fully vaccinated, then they don't even need to go home, but they do need to wear a mask until their quarantine time is up, even if you're vaccinated. Is that, so they do not need to quarantine, but they are, um, strongly recommending they wear the mask until those quarantine times are up. And as long as they don't develop symptoms, they can remain at school.
Okay, thank you.
And all of this, this is from, um, the North Carolina Strong Schools Toolkit and also the Iredell County Health Department. So that's what I'm referencing.
And if I can, this is Alicia Hall, the, the nurse at Cabarrus Charter. I just wanted to jump in and piggyback off what Lori mentioned, especially with that, um, those different quarantine day options. So like, you know, the CDC and the, the health department is still recommending the fourteen days, but you have the option to do the ten days, um, like she said, with the, with no symptoms. But, you know, in, in the guidance, it says that they, they must wear a mask, like they, it's not a, you know, you should or we would like you to. If they're going to return prior to that, you know, that fourteenth day and they're going to turn on day ten, they have to wear a mask through the fourteenth day. Same with day seven and a negative test, they have to wear a mask through that fourteenth day. Um, and then I know she mentioned too about like the, the mask to mask student contact. Um, and that one, um, you know, depending upon, I think, the school as well, um, just size-wise and maybe how many people that you have, you know, in your lunchroom or, or in your classroom, you know, it says, you know, for the students to be able to, if they were in close contact with somebody that, you know, their student that's positive, um, mask to mask, but they need to be wearing it, you know, consistently and the right way. And it has to be tight fitting and it has to be, you know, where, you know, let's say in the lunchroom, you haven't had it off, you know, for a half an hour around, you know, six feet closer to the people that you're eating lunch with. So I think it's going to maybe depend too, you know, on, on the school and the circumstance. So, but it definitely is something that is a new option this year.
Um, this is Heather Hunsucker from Langtree Upper. Um, just to add on to that, if they've had COVID in the last three months, they also do not have to quarantine. The, the one takeaway that I'm hoping you all are understanding is this is very time-intensive, um, especially when you have students that are changing classes. Um, the teachers have been very supportive with having seating charts. Um, but with all of the students being back in the building, it's impossible to keep them three feet apart. Um, we do the best that we can, uh, but it's just not possible. So once, just to break it down, once we find out there's a positive, we have to look up their schedule. We have to find out when they were last at school, when their symptoms start, because the symptoms go from two days before they even had symptoms. So you're backing up, prob, I mean, like if you find out about a case on Friday, you may have to back up to Monday because they kind of had symptoms on Wednesday. So then you're having to, after you find that information out and you know how many days you need to back up, then you have to go to the teachers, get the seating charts for all of the teachers. Then you have to find out which of, any of those kids that are vaccinated, which is a phone call to parents, was the kid wearing a mask that was diagnosed with COVID? If they weren't, you have to quarantine everybody that's within six feet if they've not been vaccinated. So it's, it's an extremely emotional phone call to make. I have made lots of phone calls the last two days. I've had parents in tears. I have had parents cuss me out. All because of the impact that this has on the families. Um, not to mention myself. I mean, I have tough skin, but I'm also human. Um, I think the, if, if as the nurses in the building, when we see things going on, if we could have a say in what happens in our building to keep the students safe, I feel like that that would be the best thing for the students.
How about that, practitioners?
And I, I totally agree with what Heather said too, because this is not like just a, a school, like, you know, one school-based thing. I mean, this is happening, you know, at all of our schools, but this is happening every school. This is not just a, you know, Cabarrus Charter or Langtree, you know, issue. Um, everybody has cases. It's not just one or the other. And, and I agree with what Heather's saying too. I mean, I know maybe, maybe not a lot of people know, you know, exactly what, what school nurses do or, or maybe they think, you know, like some people, like, you know, we, all we do is just, you know, put Band-Aids and, um, on kids' knees and, and check temperatures and that is just not the case. Um, you know, we spend a we, we're busy in a regular year and then, you know, add in what it was like this, this last weekend. And she's right, like having to figure out where all these kids were, talk to all the teachers, figure out who's vaccinated, who's not, um, figure out where that kid was, you know, six or seven classrooms, um, during the last three days. And then, um, pulling them all out of the classroom and putting them in an isolation room. Well, they have to sit there while we go through and call their parents, who again, like she said, are upset and they're afraid. And then we're just telling them, okay, well now, you know, you have to be home, you know, your kid has to stay home for, for two weeks. Depending on, you know, and have jobs and, and it's not going to be easy for them to kick off two weeks potentially, you know, many times throughout the school year. So, you know, I, I echo with what she said is that, and honestly, for this, for this last week, like there's just no chance that we could, we could do this the rest of the year and still do our regular jobs. Like, it's just not, not possible.
Thanks, Alicia. Thanks, Heather. Lori, thanks, Sarah.
Clarifying questions, just right quick. I didn't understand a couple of things. Is the quarantine distancing, is it three or six feet? I think I heard both being tall sounds. Is it six feet?
So the quarantine is six feet. However, the three feet comes into effect if two kids are wearing a mask and one of them is diagnosed with COVID. You only have to quarantine within that three feet. The person six feet away doesn't have to quarantine if they're wearing a mask. And I can tell you, just this week, we had that situation where the student that tested positive was wearing a mask. And instead of me having to quarantine nine kids, I only had to quarantine four. I mean, that's huge because those other kids were wearing a mask.
And you hit, if you're, you're hitting on my second clarifying question. I didn't, I didn't quite follow earlier that they're tied together. I apologize. So the mask to mask in students is exactly what you said. If you've got, if, if everybody's wearing a mask and one student is test positive, then you reduce the amount of people you have to look at from a distancing exposure.
That's exactly, yes, that's exactly.
Is there a time element? I think Ms. Hall was alluding to there being a time element involved in that as well, like.
Yeah, what the, what they say is the fifteen minutes. So we all know that in classrooms, they're in there for more than fifteen minutes. So if they're sitting beside them, obviously you do have to quarantine those kids.
Okay, that's, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure I understood.
And even, and even with the fifteen minutes, it's a total of fifteen minutes in a twenty-four hour period. So even for staff, right? I mean, so it could be like, oh, were you with, you know, around so-and-so, five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, you know, within that one, that one day. I mean, it would, could add up, you know, pretty easy.
So I understand with all the students back in the building, we can't do six feet and three feet hard. Are most of our classrooms set up where students aren't in the pods? And I know pods are great for learning, but have we started moving desks back into rows so that we can potentially limit some of the spacing issues between children?
At Concord Lake, the answer is no. We spent all summer moving desks out and chairs back in after the decision was made that masks were not required. Um, if we are going back, that is a possible, I mean, no, we, we can do it. We can start. I would just have to communicate with teachers today to do it, but no. And currently I don't know if we even have enough, enough desk in our school to do it. Um, but even with desk, um, our desk, unfortunately, I did allude to this in the face-to-face meeting, we aren't able to do three feet. We are not, even with desk.
And maybe I'm not, maybe it's not three feet as much as, I know sometimes in pods, you've got kids just directly looking at each other, which seems to me more concerning that if they're all facing the same direction, maybe there's less chance for as much contact.
Yeah, our understanding from our nurse was regardless of the way that they're facing, it's the distance. So have to get them the furthest apart. But we're willing to do whatever we have to do to ensure that our students, um, and staff are safe.
I was just going to chime in too. I know in the guidance, it does say, you know, the, the use of pods is not recommended. The best, you know, the best thing is to have everybody face the same direction. So you don't have one kid like breathing in the face of the other. So definitely rows, um, and, and as much as you can possibly space out as best.
Thanks for the feedback so far. And again, thanks to the nurses for being on here and for sharing. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, an N of one, being one positive case has pretty significant knock-on effects with phone calls, even. has pretty significant knock-on effects with phone calls, administrative burden. And I spoke to at least one nurse in the last two days. He was on making phone calls close to midnight to parents. And, uh, these phone calls clearly were not easy phone calls. These were not good news phone calls. So the emotional burden, the physical burden, the, the mental toll on our nurses is significant and other stuff on the screen. Beth Compton, did you get your, do you want to ask a question around the, the protocols?
No, I think we had a, I think I saw, if I remember correctly, a pretty good protocol plan from CSUSA. And I'm wondering, um, this did not come up just now, but I'm also wondering, are the teachers, I know the teachers at lower at Langtree, some of them had owl cameras. I don't know if that was the same for upper. Is it an option to do that for the kids that are quarantined? Are, are they getting packets? What, what happens when they quarantine?
Beth, I can answer that for Lang Lower. Right now, um, all of our teachers, um, all of our new teachers do not have Schoology access. So, and our, uh, students have not been issued devices. Um, yet we're planning on issuing those devices this week, once we get the technology forms, parent signatures, um, from our parents. So we're running into that right now and the fact that they don't have access on Schoology, which we're working on this week as well. So for now, we are doing packets, um, that works for us. Um, we are, um, talking to parents through email. The teachers are doing this. They are checking in on them daily to make sure, you know, they're doing okay. Have any questions, that kind of thing, um, for the time being.
So hold up with Schoology, Miss Maggi, is that, um, what's going on?
No, it has, it's directly related to Power School. And once they get their Power School UID, they're able to get into Schoology. So we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied with the Power School numbers. So once they get that, it's pretty quick as to far as, you know, getting them into Schoology. Um, and then it's teaching the students again, how to access assignments online and all of that.
And do we have that option still? Maggie, one-to-one owl cameras, so.
The owl cameras are there. And actually the, the next item is the mobile plan and what we are authorized and not authorized to do. Do we want to go to that now? Or do you want to finish the previous conversation and we can move to that?
Yeah, we'll stay on Martin's, um, plan.
Yeah, let's finish this one first, Maggie. I do see on the agenda, it's a great question. We'll get to it. So.
I'll speak for Langtree Upper. This is Mr. List. Uh, teachers have been instructed if they have a student that is either quarantined or out with COVID, they must provide direct instruction for the student while they're out. They've been asked to make the experience as close to that of those in the classroom. Uh, teachers have the autonomy to choose Zoom or Teams to teach their quarantined or positive students. They've been asked to communicate with their students and the parents, um, to share how they're providing that direct instruction for them while they're out. Uh, teachers were informed that they need to provide an opportunity for students to interact with the content and ask questions. And then depending on the course and the number of students, this could be live or instruction, or if only one student is affected and the content lends itself, the teacher may send a video, but then also hold a one-on-one session on their free block or after school to work with that student. I also shared with our teachers that if things continue as they have been, there's a real possibility we're going to end up streaming every class live as we did last year, uh, based on our numbers. Um, our plans for our students to qualify for mobile, uh, versus, uh, for their IEP or 504 have, uh, individualized instruction based on the student need, the 504 coordinator and case manager of the student with an IEP assist in the development of each individual student mobile plan.
And I'll, I'll chime in real quick. Kudos to Shane as well. The biggest key for all of us is communication with those families and the expectations that we have. Um, same thing with the Cabarrus Lower. They have packets and contacting the families. And same thing with, um, what Elizabeth was talking about, Schoology. Uh, we were trying to get, um, computers out this week. And we are at the mercy of Power School, which because we are a school that starts so much earlier than the rest of the state, the Power School is down a little bit this past week too. So that kind of set us back behind, but communication is key.
Thank you. Um, Kendall, Dana, just want to give you guys a chance to ask questions or provide some feedback if you have any. If you do not, that's okay. Just want to give everybody a chance to share a perspective here.
I think most of my questions, um, have been answered. They were very similar to what y'all were saying. Um, my big question is with the mobile thing, I know we're not to that yet, but how is this getting communicated to parents? Because it seems like that seems to be a big complaint in all the emails that we're getting is that parents, their kids are sent home and they have no, no guidance or no, any of that. So how is that getting communicated? And are we positive? I mean, I know that things aren't always received as they're seen. Um, but how are we ensuring that the kids that are quarantined, their parents have a plan? Cause there seems to be a lot of confusion about that.
Um, if I can jump in here for a minute, so part of when I have to make phone calls to families, that is a big question that they ask me. Being the nurse, I'm not an educator. I don't know about Schoology, you know, all of that stuff. That's not my forte. But what I do is I email all of the teachers and absences and include the parent in that email so that the parent has all of the email addresses of the teachers. Um, and also so absences know not to mark them as an unexcused absence, which is also a concern of the parents. So after all the phone calls, then come all the emails so that we're communicating that.
I can also add, I know that there is a welcome packet that is, um, being at the higher level, the state level. And so once that goes out, it sort of details all of the different mobile plans and the exceptions. And I know our EC lead, um, on the state team also reached out to all of the EC leads at the school site to talk about contingency plans and really, um, helping them understand what they need to do from day one as well. And at ICA, we, you know, we, we're continuing what we did last year. Um, the teachers did a good job. The only thing I, I think that we all need to do is continue to support teachers if they have to do the mobile because of quarantine, because it was a stretch for them. They were doing it the best job that they can. So I know we have all the resources. We have different platforms, clever apps. Uh, K two at ICA, K, K three may look different than middle school. However, we do want to ensure that, um, there's at least the mini lesson for each core content and an avenue for, uh, direct access if they have to talk to a contact, let it be during a lunch bunch session, and then talking to the teachers daily. So, um, there is a little bit of flexibility for grade levels. So the teachers are aware, however, I know in that welcome packet, once that's, uh, set to go, that will probably alleviate a lot of the questions parents have.
And for us, we went ahead as for those students who are already starting in quarantine, the teachers already have communicated with those parents. They currently have a Zoom link, um, that the teacher will be using. Those teachers do have owl cams, um, to use with those students. So currently those students already are hitting the ground running. We did, um, ask and request for the few that we got before open house, that they could send someone that was not exposed to the kid or not in quarantine to get any additional information that they might want. But we used just email beforehand and gave them a Zoom link so they could join for Monday.
Thanks, everyone. Kendall, any perspective or questions you want to ask or share?
I guess a question that I would have, uh, for the schools that have already started. It just, uh, an idea, just what percentage of, of many folks in your building are actually wearing masks?
Uh, as far as Langtree Upper, I would say it's a guess, maybe five. It's very, very low percentage at Langtree Upper.
Okay. And, um, I would agree with Heather for Lang Lower. It's, it's a very small number of students wearing masks.
Chad?
I would say for Ca- Cabarrus, um, K twelve, I'd say at least fifty percent. I mean, we've got a large number of people wearing masks in our building, staff and students. Sorry, Martin, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're okay. Chad, I'm not sure if you're in a position to speak, but if you can, the floor is yours. Please drive carefully because Beth Allen's the cell phone, please.
I'm, I'm okay right now. I'm listening. Uh, I think all the questions I have are, are, are coming out, so I'll let you know if I have some.
All right. Thank you.
Martin, I've got, I've got one other question, kind of piggybacking a little bit off of, uh, what Dana and the questions that Beth had asked. Uh, uh, the communication, uh, how, how are the protocols as far as the social distancing or what, what, now that we're here, what little bit is trying to be attempted? The cleaning, the gel in and out, all that kind of stuff. How well is that kind of stuff being, being communicated? There seems to be, and I think Ms. Compton alluded to this, uh, a little bit ago. There seems to be, uh, uh, misunderstanding in the communities that the board has taken no action, uh, on, on establishing protocols and procedures. And I seem to remember us spending an inordinate amount of time at this.
Talking about some of the changes, however, we could do a better job too. So, um, we'll, we'll continue to send out, and we do have an open door policy. And I know Lori and, uh, Sarah always talk families through every case. So when they call, they take the time and like the other nurses stated, they really take time to ensure everybody understands.
Hey, I have a question. That's on your, I think same track as, as Wayne, um, for Mark or for Maggie. Now, I've heard that there's a draft document. I've heard there's a welcome back to school packet. Um, and I'm going to be really blunt and honest. I saw an, uh, a co, an email from one of the schools that has returned on Tuesday. And if one of my children sent me that, I would tell them that was unacceptable. Okay. So, and that is not to apportion blame and it's not to call somebody ugly. That's not my intent. My intent is CSUSA are running the schools. Wayne is right. We went back over protocols this time last year. We sat in the room on July twenty-eighth and we were told what protocols are going to be in place, the same ones as last year, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the enforcement of those and the reality that we as the board talked about on July twenty-eighth.
As far as the document goes, it was my understanding that that document has gone to principals. Um, so that it is ready to go out. There was a delay because of the mobile learning. It's sent out something that the board had not approved, but I understand Mark had.
About the mobile learning, yes, the protocols. And I looked across the jeopardy checkerboard there and I saw some heads shaking when you said it's been sent to principals.
It has not. It has.
Okay.
Has it not?
We have draft form. We don't have final version to send out.
Okay, that's current. Thanks. So it's August fifteenth now, seven o'clock, and we still don't have it. That's not acceptable and it's a grave concern because we knew we were going back to school in August. In some way, shape or form. So the fact now that Concord Lake and Idyll open in four, twelve hours, Langtree and Cab. Prophecy, I'll take my kids to a school fifteen miles south. So that is not acceptable. You guys need to own this. You need to fix it. It needs to be fixed today because it is not acceptable for our four thousand students and families to be guessing and for there to be a vacuum. So that has to change.
It, it will be fixed tonight.
Tonight? Great.
Tonight.
Can I, can I make a suggestion for the principals? Uh, Mr. List has gotten famous in the last week for his online tutorial videos for parking instructions and drop-off instructions. Uh, and they seem to be well received and they seem to have some effect. So, uh, my suggestion is perhaps maybe, uh, we utilize that with videos. What we're doing in the school. Um, I realize there's constraints to that, you know, kids on, on video and all that. But to the best we can, it seems like we could also, uh, you know, get, uh, get creative here to, uh, uh, come up some ways to invite the community into the schools, uh, virtually anyway, so they can see, see these protocols in action. So they know that they're there and they get a they get some, some form of reassurance about them.
But to me, this sits with CSUSA and helping support the principals in the building and helping give confidence and transparent, being transparent without stakeholders about what's going on in these buildings.
Hey, Martin, um, I do want want to, to say something. I, I would like CSUSA to put together on the Facebook page be sent to the principals to send out to their student body. Um, first, I would like to have listed all the COVID protocols for prevention, including the mention of our three sixty sanitizing machines, which other schools in the area do not have that actual hospitals use to sanitize their schools. I also, um, would like the mobile learning exemptions, how it's going to be a case-by-case basis. I know a lot of our parents are very concerned about immunocompromised family or family members. So at a case-by-case basis, then they'll have a mobile option. Um, not for all students, but for specific ones. And also for quarantining, the principals did a great job putting together what they were going to do for their quarantines for COVID and all of the different choices, whether it's mask and mask, vaccinated, unvaccinated. So the parents know exactly what's going to happen when a student tests positive. That would be great if you guys could put together something like that. Then all of the parents will be educated. The board will know everything, things on point. And we'll be able to move forward without this chaotic environment that I've been feeling from the schools.
One of the things that we.
I'd also like to. Sorry. I think also another thing that should be added to that is like, yes, that's a great expectation, but let's put a timeline on it. Like from now, we need to have this.
One of the things we did during open house was the state team, um, sent out basically the protocols. We simply printed them and posted them everywhere during open house. Um, so that families who did have questions were able to go there. Um, I think a lot of the questions I got, um, were around just the number of kids in a classroom. So a lot of mine are some of the things that forced to use tables in a lot of our lower grade classes, hence the face-to-face. I know I saw Nurse, Nurse Hall, thank you. Um, Nurse Katie is pushing it to. I know I saw nurse, nurse Hall, thank you. Um, Nurse Katie is pushing it to can we get them from anywhere? I understand, we understand. But, um, our incredible growth, um, things that charter school USA is families can't see them.
Is this not something where CS USA has desks somewhere else that could be moved in? I mean, it feels like in an organization this big to schools, I get maybe they can't be there tomorrow. But this is a large organization. I can't imagine there aren't desks somewhere.
We, we do have desks that we can shift if needed. It may not be enough. We don't have quite as many as we used to have because of diminished capacity for that. But if Kendra lets us know the number, we can make sure we get that to her.
I mean, just this board shuttered a school. So I mean, I feel like fixed assets shouldn't be an issue.
Correct. And then the document that you're requesting is the packet that we were talking about that will be out tonight. It's my understanding all of them that was needed. And it's my understanding that was received tonight. So that one will be finalized and ready to go.
Any other questions or comments on the board on what we have discussed so far? Okay, Donna, I'm going to come to you in a second here for just a perspective with all the guidelines, guidance, just give a perspective on us as a board, us as a school system with 4,000 kids. And, uh, you know, triple that family members. Can you give us some guidance? See how we sit and from a legal standpoint?
Sure. Um, as I think the board has referred to a couple of times. You reviewed this matter at your, at a prior meeting and made the board board decision that you would allow masks to be optional. At that time, we talked about the strong school toolkit, which was the guidance effective July 30th from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. That remains the appropriate guidance. Um, and we talked about the fact that that guidance strongly recommends that everybody in K-12 use masks, but it does provide for local flexibility. One thing that I would say in response to what I've heard so far is kudos to the nurses. Um, and Martin, thanks to you, the other board members for inviting the nurses to come to your meeting. I think that it is very helpful to ground your decisions in that kind of helpful information from providers in general, but certainly your own school nurses who clearly seem to have a wealth of information in large part because God bless them, they're the ones on the ground on doing the work they're describing. But I will say that as I am looking at the toolkit and offering you my comments on what the requirements are and what the guidance is, and would certainly encourage you to listen to their statements because my assessment is that they clearly know the toolkit and what those requirements are.
Okay. So thanks for that. So if we as a board, we're going to move in a direction of giving each individual school local ownership chip, whether it be the principal, the principal in collaboration with the nurse and the local health authority, that would be an appropriate decision to give each school the flexibility to manage this based on what the nurses and the principals are seeing in that building at any given time.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. Statement.
Um, sorry, Martin. Um, with that, uh, with that being granted to the schools on a local level, would that, or could that include making masks mandatory? Or is that something that has to be, you know, going through the number of kids that have to quarantine and the number of kids that are diagnosed with COVID?
Yeah, for me personally, Heather, it means whatever it means to keep as many kids as we can in school. Based on what you and Alicia and Lori and Sarah and the other nurse are seeing in the buildings. That's what it means to me. You know, we want kids in the building. So.
Martin, sorry for interrupting. I think I would go as far as changing. I don't know if this wording that was provided was the motion that wants to be moved forward. But I think it would be including, but not limited to face mask and, and things like that would be included. I think another piece I would like to add to that, just after seeing the sheer number of emails we've seen, I've certainly seen the traffic on Facebook. You know, um, that sort of thing. I know Idyll County Schools did that as a part of their resolution. I think it's well worded and I think it's really important that we remind all students, board members, families, CS, CSUSA and everyone, that this is not going to be accepted. It's, it's been pretty crazy, um, over the past week.
Yeah, I think that's a great addition. Completely agree.
Ken, I've got, I'm confused and perhaps my fellow board members and Donna can assist me in becoming unconfused. First of all, I wholeheartedly agree with what Beth, Ms. Allen just said. Been some pretty, uh, pretty intense conversations over the past few days. Everybody just needs to take a break and step back and recognize that this is a situation that none of us want to be in. We're doing the best we can. And I also echo the comment out of Sunday. And I really, but I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused about the discussion about turning over or giving the authority to the local schools. I mean, I understand what we're trying to do, but last August, did we not already do that when we approved the schools to follow uh, the current, then the current guidelines? Did we not approve the schools to follow whatever the North Carolina guidance may be at any particular time? And I'm confused on what it is we're doing here.
If, if I may, sure. Uh, I believe we talked about in your last meeting, but if not, um, if you'll allow me to back up a little bit. The toolkit and the guidance that comes with the toolkit obviously has changed any number of times since, uh, we all began dealing with this effective July 30th, 2021. And what's important about this current guidance is that it provides for a lot of local flexibility. In fact, the talk specifically about having the toolkit having been updated to provide school leaders with greater flexibility in implementing the layer prevention strategies based on current COVID-19 trends. And it encourages consultation with local public health officials for input on community transmission and vaccine uptake to make local decisions. And so, as I said before, there's a lot of language strongly recommending masks. And so the board has the option of declaring that, and still have the option optional. Um, the further thing that I understand you want to consider tonight is listening to your principals and your school nurses and folks at your individual schools and sort of ramping up perhaps a bit your implementation of the current, current toolkit, but most specifically giving that flexibility specifically to the individual principals of your four schools. But again, the toolkit itself speaks a lot to local flexibility.
Right. I guess I just seems like last year it was named something else like lighting the way forward or, you know, that had a different terminology.
That's correct. You're right.
I just, I don't, I, and then I mean, if we got to do the, you know, give the authority again, I just, I was under the impression that we'd already given the authority to schools follow whatever guidelines and recommendations the school or the, the state hands down. I guess my follow-up question would be on the masking. Is, is the masking, is that from a legality standpoint, is that something that the power to institute to not institute masks, does that rest with, uh, the board? The power to institute or not institute masks, does that rest with the board?
And again, I would recommend that that's the type of information that you would be saying that you want your school principal in consultation with the nurses and Charter Schools USA state leadership team to consider and make use of in their individual buildings. And again, I would really encourage you that there's every indication that, again, you'd expect reports, data, information about how this works over the next week or two, maybe not even any much more than three. And then you'd be hearing back and you would have the opportunity at that point to revisit any piece of this, to fine tune it, to, you know, take a look more specifically, for example, Jessica, with that piece of it.
Yeah, that's a great point, Donna. I've got, I like what is on the screen with the changes that you suggested. I think we need to have weekly communication from Charter Schools USA on current state of affairs, how are we in each of our schools? And I think there has to be a weekly forum. And forgive me, nurses, if you don't love me, but a weekly forum where we can, as an individual school, communicate with our parents. Communicate with our parents and let them know these are the challenges. This is the algorithm. When Johnny tests positive, here's the cascade of events that occurs, because I truly think that most people do not have an idea. So I think weekly communication from CSUSA to this board, similar to what you sent on Friday, Mark, I think personally would be great. And then I think that the weekly forum. I know many of you guys do the Zoom chats and I was on one a couple of weeks ago and it was great. Something like that, just to give parents the opportunity to directly engage and interact with the school leadership principals and nurses to get answers to these questions, because you guys are the experts in the building. The nurses are the medical experts and with how quickly everything is changing, false information and inaccurate information and incorrect stories quickly get legs and then they run. So I think we need to be as transparent and as open and as available as we can to our school stakeholders. And that sits for CSUSA.
In light of that, can I just clarify something real quick, just looking at Facebook conventional thing was because we didn't really care. And I know we've already addressed that, but the reality of it is, we know that you made the right, the choice to send your kids to charter school and we're trusting your faith and your intelligence that you are doing what's best for your kids necessarily, so to each their own and we respect the fact. The idea of giving the ability to the principals and the nurses in order to make these decisions is not because we want to wash our hands of it, it's because we trust those administrators and those nurses who are there every day at the school and know what's going on and are very aware of the situation, more so than we ever are in reality. And what may be happening at Iredell Charter is not necessarily what's happening at Cabarrus or Concord State. And so to blanket everything would be wrong, because what happens at one is not the case for all. And so this really is not a way to wash our hands of it, it's a way to allow each school to be individualized in that sense, to where they do what's best for the kids and the environment and the community in their school. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
No, I, yeah, I think it's a good clarification. I don't, I'm not watching any Facebook comments at this point. That's exactly it. That's exactly it. You know, we can't, the leaders in the building can, they know what's best, right? So let's give them the agility and, and the empowerment to go ahead and make these decisions, to keep as many kids in the schools as we can. Because I can speak somewhat for the nurses right here. The amount of work the nurses on our screen right now have had to do in the last week is not sustainable. Absolutely not sustainable. Not gonna, it's, these guys are gonna burn out unless we make a change. And with all the quarantine numbers and yes, while it's a very, it's less than 0.05% of kids in our schools have tested positive for COVID in the last week, but the knock on effect, because of the response and the protocols that have to be in place, it gets magnified and magnified. And the administrative work on our nurses here is absurd. And they're in the position with the principals in the building to know what their school needs based on their dynamics in the moment. So that to me seems the logical thing to do, to give them the agility. And they need to hear from me and from us that we completely trust you guys, nurses, principals in the building to work with the local health authority and do whatever you deem is necessary to keep out as many kids in the school as we can. You have my complete support and I hope I speak for the rest of the board. Do whatever you need to do to keep as many kids in the building as we can.
If I can make a comment, I'm gonna be the odd man out here. I agree wholeheartedly that we need to get, as I alluded to earlier, because I thought we'd already done it. We need to give the schools, empower them to do whatever they need to do to follow whatever guidance is issued. However, when it comes to the decision about masks, that unfortunately in our society has been turned into a political football and turns into a political of the just downright nasty past couple of weeks that we received ad nauseam last year. I do not think and put that kind of stress on them that they are already under. That is something that we're not careful, will be perceived as this board not having the backbone to make our own decision. So I'm all about giving them the power to follow strong toolkit, all that good stuff. I've got my own thoughts about masks. But I think that's a decision this board needs to retain control over and not, not pass the buck, so to speak. I get what we're trying to do. I think it's a great idea. I think that particular piece of this is too much of a political football to lay in the laps of these principles that are already operating in an impossible situation. I hate that the board has to take the brunt of that, but quite honestly, that's what we're here for. We don't get paid to do this, if we don't like the heat, we can get out of the kitchen. That is just something I feel strongly that we need to retain decision-making capabilities on and not put it on principles.
It's a fair perspective, Wayne, I appreciate you speaking up. I don't agree. I've spoken to several of the principals about this and I think in conjunction, if we are basing this on keeping children in the building and we're working with the health leaders in the building and the local health authority. To me, we're trying to keep kids in the building. So yeah, you've received some hate emails, so have I. We want to empower those people locally and I just shared right there, we support, or I personally support whatever decision they need to make. But I'm not an expert in what's going on in Cabarrus or Concord Lake or Langloah or Iredell. I'm not, and I don't think anybody on the board is. The people in the building in the moment, the health practitioner and the principal, those are the people best equipped and best positioned to make the decision on what their school needs. Because what Langloah needs may be different from Iredell, Cabarrus, Concord Lake. So I understand your perspective and I respect it, but to me, if this is all couched in what's best in local, local ownership and what's best for the individual schools, let's empower those folks and know that we stand 100% behind them. If that means that one school needs to go 100% masks, I stand behind them. If that means another school chooses to do something differently, I stand right behind them. They need to know they have our support. That's my opinion.
So what did the principal say, Martin? Can we hear from him?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. I was actually gonna chime in there. So for Langloah, I will say first and foremost, we want the health and safety of all staff and students, number one. I did meet with my staff last week. We actually formed a circle in the gym and we had a conversation about what was going on, protocol calls and what we can do as a staff moving forward. And I will tell you that my staff all agree that they will do anything to keep students in the building, anything.
And we had a conversation last week about local ownership. Was that something you were happy about or unhappy about?
Yeah, I mean, I was, you know, what, you're right, it's different at Langloah than it is at, let's say, Iredell. You know, it's just different. So I am happy to work with Nurse Allison to try to determine what's best for our students and staff at this point for our school. Yeah, I am.
So I'd like to piggyback off what Pageant stated. Our teachers have already showed that 80% of our students were in the building last year, starting in October. We followed all the procedures and protocol and will continue to do so as well. And knowing that both my nurses have very close contact, they're being trained. Daily, we receive information from the local health department on cases and any new information that we need to know for schools. So I do appreciate the local authority. However, I do want to stress that it is a team, it is a team approach. It's not just my decision, it's a decision with our nurses, with the local health department and looking at data. So I think, I like what Wayne was saying, especially that it's not just, you know, if you say it's just the principal, it will be a political game. And it's not just us, it's with the health department, with our nurses and with the CSUSA state team as well.
Yeah, I agree, Andrea, well said.
I also had a conversation with my staff Friday prior to leaving, had mask on. And I would say at least 50% of the students also had masks. I do know there were some concerns. From a staff member was teaching little ones with the mask on. And so she did ask that vaccinated, I heard that mentioned earlier in regards to high school students being vaccinated. So that was only one person, but she also said she would do whatever was necessary to teach our kids. So our staff's ready to make whatever decision as well. I know that my school nurse McDaniel has said all along, I heard that mentioned earlier in regards to high school students being vaccinated. So that was only one person, but she also said she would do whatever was necessary to teach our kids. So our staff's ready to make whatever decision as well. I know that my school nurse McDaniel has said all along, we meet every day with every student that's currently in quarantine. I did join her on those phone calls with parents to ensure that we were all on the same page. She's making sure those letters are going out, but I do know that the work that she has done just in one week without students being there. I do understand the perspective of the current school nurses that's on the call, simply because I joined her in those calls so that she was not kind of out. I also am not 100% loving that this would just say school principal, because I also agree with Dr. LaPresti that it is the school nurse, it is our staff, it is the local health department. There are a lot of local, local decision makers, health officials in particular, that are going into the decision that we would make at Concord Lake.
Thanks, Kendra. Any other perspective from?
Mr. List at Langtree Upper. You know, we're tasked every day with keeping our students safe, whether it's through or in this case, safety protocols medically, it's part of our job. And while the backlash may not be something we welcome, we welcome the ability to keep our students safe.
Thanks, Shane. Cabarrus, Kyle, Kim, any comment, feedback on this?
I agree, I agree. Any decision that we make, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna please everyone in the our first and foremost, you know, we've worked with Nurse Hall, we've worked with Ms. White and our team. You know, we've got to make a decision that supports our group. At the end of the day, that's the number one thing, regardless, you know, you said it best earlier, you know, we've got to give grace, we've got to work with each other, but it's kind of one of those, what's the lesser of two evils, right? So I'm, I'm prepared to make the decision with the group. Obviously, it would be, you know, Ms. White and I have to come together with an agreement and, you know, utilizing our staff as well as our
and I are in a unique position because space is at a premium. Every single room is used in our buildings. We have to use our main office conference room for the quarantine space when a student presents with symptoms, because that's the only unused space in our building. So that gives us unique considerations when we think about the mask issue.
Yep, absolutely. Some, again, it speaks to the same point, Kim and Kyle, there's different dynamics at each of the, each of the four schools and each of the five buildings. As a board, I stand behind you 100%, whatever decision you guys need to make. Okay, if there's any other comments, now's your time to speak up, otherwise I think we've kicked this one around enough. I think we've heard from the principals, from CSUSA, from board members. Happy to entertain any, any motion from any of the board members.
What is one final comment against Shane List at Langtree? Just I would like all of the families in all of our schools to keep one of our students in their thoughts and prayers. Her father passed away from COVID last week, her mother is in the family. And while we all think this is all happening to someone else, somewhere else, this is happening right now to one of our own. And so please keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Shane, well said.
Hey, Martin, the only thing, and Donna can say if this isn't appropriate, to add into what we're writing is the motion. I would like to include that no harassment, discrimination, bullying or retaliation into this motion. I think that's a very important part of this.
Completely agree. And then the other piece, Mark, with feedback from the rest of the board is a weekly forum for our parents to engage directly with nurse, nurses, principals. And forgive me nurses, I don't want to put more on your plate, but I do think, you know, the juice is worth the squeeze here. If we can educate and give our parents a direct line of sight or direct access to you once a week for maybe an hour just to help understand and educate, I think that would be fantastic. And I don't think it's a long-term thing, but I do think the benefit there would outweigh the, the short-term cost.
And one thing that might be helpful with that, I know Mr. List sent us yesterday, just the email that Iredell County sends them. If we could get that from Cabarrus County as well, I'm sure they're doing some sort of weekly update. Um, that's just helpful and more communication that we can receive.
Martin, this is Donna. For whoever is incorporating your revision, can I recommend that the, the usual language, and I think to capture what Beth is talking about might be bullying, harassment or intimidation. Thank you.
I think it's Mark doing the typing. If it is Mark, you did a great job.
You've never seen me in an interest-based bargaining session where I do this all the time.
I think maybe that second to last word should be B, not per.
While, while we're waiting, I just wanted to kind of make a comment here. In all the phone calls that I've had to make over the weekend, a- all of the parents have been frustrated understandably, but also supportive in recognizing that this decision isn't easy for anyone. Um, some of the conversations got a little heated about politics. Um, I talked to the health director and she said it best. People have trusted medicine for most of their lives. They trust the medical field to make medical decisions. Unfortunately, in this situation, politics has gotten in front of it. And that's unfortunate because it is a real virus that is affecting it's bigger than anything that any one of us can do. But together, we can try to get a hold on things and do things better for our students, for their families. So I appreciate any support that we can get on making decisions that are going to directly affect those that we see and deal with every day.
Thanks Heather. All right, Mark, you passed the typing quiz in front of a few people. Um, nicely done.
Never type in public, never do math in public.
All right. If anyone on the board would like to make a motion based on our discussion, um, that would be fantastic and we can.
This is Beth Allen. I'll make that mention.
Thanks Beth. You have a second?
This is Dana. I'll second it.
Thanks Dana. Mark, can we get a roll?
Yeah, just one minute. Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
And Martin?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes. I think we lost Chad. I did not see Chad on the, uh, on the call anymore. So that's why I didn't call his name.
Yeah, I see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Coming down to the yes.
Thank you, Chad. I'm sorry. Lost track of you.
That's okay. Not a problem. I'm in the car, so I've been in and out of service.
Got it.
Next item, Maggie, I believe is mobile learning. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir. And Mark, are you gonna share that for us?
Just say, well.
Okay, so our um, mobile learning plan as we are presenting it and working with our principals is um, basically, we are, if anyone wants to be mobile, they can. Um, we don't have that authorization at this time. So what we did was we took the uh, the um, exceptions that we know are not currently prohibited under any um, rules or guidelines or legislation and um, established a plan that would allow for those exceptions and ensure that our students with special needs whether they're on an IEP or a 504 and require um, medical consideration would be able to access the mobile um, option or the remote option. If we have students who are suspended um, due to behavioral issues, if we have um, students on quarantine due to COVID, um, then we would be able to provide them with the instruction. And um, so that's what we're proposing is that we continue to work to um, provide our students with an enhanced in-person option and really help our teachers continue to use the technologies that they've learned to create engaging instruction and um, be able to do some of the things that they learned to do that really engage students and helps um, differentiate instruction. Um, but then it also will be beneficial for those students who might need to be um, home due to medical issues or some other extenuating circumstance. So what you have here is a, a really um, basic explanation of our proposal. And you know, that implementation is not dictated. It can be synchronous. It could be asynchronous. Um, depending on this, the teacher's abilities, what the students really need and what will best benefit them. Um, so that's, and the key here is this could change at any time. And that's why we have the footnote at the bottom, that it is subject to revision based on state guidance and based on um, any updated legislation that may come from the state.
Maggie, um, could you back up and, and start with the, what you started with of the uh, uh, why we do not have the authority currently? So uh, that is explained.
Absolutely. So um, the, the authority that gave us, um, they, well, what gave us the authority to offer the, the mobile last year was the governor's um, executive order and that state of emergency, but that all um, expired at the end of Ju- Ju- July, Ju- July. It expired this summer. And so we no longer have that. And um, the legislature has had several proposals that went, that have been discussed but have not been passed. So at this point, there has been nothing in legislation that gives us that authority back. And I know Matthew Tilly is on here, and if I'm saying this all wrong, Matthew, please weigh in. I'm happy to have you clear up anything that I'm saying incorrectly. But with that it be
Maggie, you've got it correct. I mean, the, the, the answer is, and I think it was Wayne, and I'm learning to recognize names on this call, but the answer is that emergency legislation that only applied to last school year is what allowed you to have virtual instruction. Um, where it had really never been used before. And there is no continuation of that authority coming into this next school year. And that's one of the reasons that you have IEPs and 504s is one of the exceptions and quarantines is one of the exceptions. Those are sort of, those are things, especially in IEP and 504 that trump state law. And so while state law may have some requirements, you also have to serve a student with an IEP or a 504. That's why there's an exception there. But your, your broad authority to have virtual instruction which came in the emergency legislation has not been continued. And that, that is deliberate on the part of the general assembly who wants to get everyone back into school and thinks that if they give that same blanket of authority this year, that mainly some districts, not necessarily some charters would um, would just find it easier to go all virtual and, and, and not really even try to be in person.
Thank you, Matthew. So um, we went ahead and moved forward with those exceptions and, and created a formal plan so that it could be brought to you and, and the schools would have guidance on how to manage opportunities for students who truly need it. Any question?
So how is this as far as, I mean, is this um, sorry, I'm reading as we go through here. So is this, uh, I'll just ask a question. I think you've answered, but I'll ask a question again, just in, in layman's terms, so we get, get the information out as fast as possible here. So if somebody is on, and then obviously we're talking, I mean, I get the EC and all that stuff, but we're obviously talking here about quarantine kids. Um, if somebody goes quarantine, they go on the mobile learning plan automatically. Is that something that will, will, they will automatically drop in like we had last year where we've got, let's take one of the classes, for example, I think I heard one of the principals say we had a uh, two or three kids out of one, one particular class that were on quarantine. Does that mean those two, three kids are automatically gonna jump up on Zoom teams, whatever, and attend virtually, just like we did last year? So the teachers are having to teach in-person and Zoom? Or will these people be taught Zoom by someone that is solely for uh, mobile learning?
Um, that actually is determined that necessarily mean that it will be synchronous and the classroom, um, it will depend on what the, the school's capacity is. It may depend on what the teacher's capacity is. Um, when we're talking about the quarantining piece. Um, it may be synchronous. The expectation is that students do receive instruction on a daily basis. It may be videos, um, using the owl camera that teachers can video themselves and then upload that and then provide opportunity for the student to reach out in a different, um, at a different time. Because we do know that for some teachers, this was a real challenge. For some teachers, it was great and they loved it. And they are able to do it very effectively. Um, and so for their students, they may be able to do that um, in a different way. But it's a short-term issue. It's not something that will go on beyond the quarantine. The students will be expected to come back once they are able to. Um, they do not get to go into um, the mobile option and then just stay there.
I got no other questions, Maggie. I hear short-term, I hear situational, I hear school-specific, and almost, you know, teacher-specific as well. So I, that's what I hear. So I have no questions.
Hey Maggie, can you remind us all who Matthew and what his position is? Um, just so.
Oh, sure. Yes. He, he is an attorney in North Carolina. He works with the coalition of, of um, the, for charter schools and um, he works with CSUSA on a regular basis.
I'd like to hear, hear from the principals on this, as to what they envision this look like at their school levels.
Um, Wayne, I can go first. Um, I will say um, that the teachers um, did an amazing job last year with um, the hybrid learning. Um, there is concern about doing it again this year that I may lose teachers um, over this. However, um, we feel certain that we can have the teachers hold office hours for students in quarantine. Um, and as Maggie said, have um, a Zoom link provided. Teachers can also record um, their lessons as needed. And then especially the lower level, um, sending home some packets um, for the students to complete. And as Maggie said, making sure that the teachers are checking in with the students daily.
Exactly what Ms. Pageant said at Cabarrus.
And as I shared earlier, it really depends on the course and the number of students that are affected uh, in each block. Obviously, if you have one student, it's much easier to touch base with them. But if you have a, a group of students, three or five students that are out because of the quarantine, which tends to be how these things work, uh, that section of the classroom, uh, then it may be easier for that to just to stream for those five students. So it really is uh, course-dependent. Um, the fifth day of school, sixth day tomorrow, it's really hard to learn calculus from a video. Uh, you really need to interact with your teacher. But if it's drawing still objects in art class, maybe that's incredible uh, number of courses and levels that we offer. It really depends on each individual course for how it's
Oh, sorry.
Sorry Kyle, go ahead.
Uh, I echo Shane. I mean, it's, it's course, it's course-dependent. It's teacher-dependent. It is, um, for us, we are one-to-one this year, so utilizing School-O-G is gonna help us with that moving forward as well. So.
Absolutely. I'm very similar at ICA. Dr. LaPresty is actually calling in because she had to, she had to start driving, but um, we're still using all of our platforms with School-O-G, Seesaw. Um, our teachers are using Zoom. We're making for sure that we're keeping our lunch bunches enabled as well, so that way teachers are able to um, be in contact with students. That social, emotional piece is constantly being um, reiterated amongst our staff and our students. Um, we're always gonna be providing the access to those mini lessons, recording weekly, the same thing that our, our teachers did last year, and they did phenomenal at, just keeping up to date on platforms so they're, to the best of their benefits.
And we are very similar. The only change that we are asking our students that are quarantined, instructions are there, how to um, contact their teacher, um, who to contact if they need additional technology at home. The only thing we're asking our families um, is that they attend live recordings or live sessions when possible. And so if they cannot, then it does say at the bottom what they need to do following that. But we are requesting that our students that are quarantined attend live sessions, um, rather than having our teachers record. It was Elizabeth who mentioned that that um, previously, and it would be this year.
And also to add to what Kendra said, we're also gonna have it, so still give them that opportunity as well, um, to make sure that they'll be successful.
Thanks folks for the feedback. So Maggie, what do you need from the board at this point?
Um, Martin, before we do that, can I ask a quick question? Cause I missed a few minutes of that. Um, Maggie, what's the ratio in classrooms for?
Um, I don't know that. Um, it's different per school. Um, I did hear from Elizabeth that they are gonna need some more, so we're looking at our Ezra funds to see if we can supplement that. Um, but each
Yes.
I will, if everyone needs them right now. Now though, the teachers who have them are the teachers with students that are quarantined.
Okay.
So
What's the ratio, you think, Ms. Woods or Mr. List?
Everyone had them last year, would have them. However, the hard part is special area teachers, we could take them from, but that means the students that are quarantined would not be able to access their special area teachers. And we did not want to punish them for something that is And we did not want to punish them for something that is. Out our special area teachers to retain their um owl cams and the teachers who absolutely need them will.
Um for all the principals, Ms. Woods, you can start. Do you need 10 more, let's say, or 12 more? What do you need?
I'm going to say we probably need about 12 to 15 more.
Okay. Who's next?
I'll be honest, uh we have enough for core teachers, tested areas. Not everybody likes them. Uh some people prefer to teach just the way we're talking right now. Um the owl camera displays the entire classroom, but it doesn't always keep the focus on the speaker and the. Teacher in the classroom. So for a more intimate discussion with somebody who's remote, the way we're having this meeting right now. Um a lot of teachers prefer to use the camera on their laptop. Um we um I don't believe every teacher wants one. We have um them available for check checkout and in full transparency, I still have some that are available that teachers. Aren't coming to ask for. Uh and I think that's because they're not um when it comes to that. Again, middle and high school is very different than elementary, right? Where you need to see that whole classroom. Middle and high school, you're really focused. On the presentation on this speaker on what's happening in in.
And um one of the questions that my school nurse asked is, Ms. Woods, are we protecting the identity of the quarantined student? Um because they, again, would be the only child that is displayed on that owl cam when we use them. So I do want to throw that out there. Um I kind of told her I don't know another way around it. Um record it and have that student exit visit afterwards.
For Cabares, we have 35 cameras K-12 right now. Um all of Uppers core teachers have them. Um that puts us around 17. So we would need a few more, but I agree with Shane at the middle school, high school level. Um some are not being utilized the way um fully capacity, because again, the delivery to the cameras. So we're at 35 over at Cabares. I don't know how many Ms. White needed, but to fully outfit my uh the up floor, the upstairs. To answer um Martin's question about who's up and who's down, uh we would probably need eight to 10 more upstairs.
And we would need seven. Thank you, Tom.
And at ICA, um all of our core teachers have them, very similar to what um Kyle and Shane mentioned. Um our teachers really enjoy being able to actually use the cameras and and the the laptops themselves because the hearing was a little harder on the owls. Um but moving into our specials teachers, we probably need maybe five to six um Macs.
Great. We have, are these schools one to one when it comes to laptop? So we have the laptop capability to hand out to students going into quarantine, you know, if we get nailed with. Something drastic and we have, oh, I don't know, 49 students go out in five days uh at one school. Do we have laptops to go to that?
Uh for upper, we are at about two students to one device uh is where our current ratio is. Uh so. We can certainly provide those for those students, but it doesn't um take away from the students that are left in the building. We are, again, using the bring your own technology or bring your own device initiative or. Students are able to bring their own laptops or tablets for the uh about 370 more devices.
Ms. Bonner, how how about you guys?
So our middle school is kind of focused more on the one to one, and then we've been moving it down to fourth and fifth, going into third through um K-2. So very similar to Shane, um we probably need close to about 300, 400 laptops if needed. But we are covered if our students do need to go out. So we can make arrangements and be able to make make it possible to make sure our students are learning.
And Ms. Page, are you guys still one to one down there?
We are. Yes, we are one to one, thankfully. We just haven't given out the devices yet. We're waiting on um the tech forums to come back signed from parents. And so we plan on doing that this week.
Kyle?
At Cabares Upper, we are one to one. We're in the same situation. Patient. We've we've distributed well over 250 devices at this point. Point. We're waiting on some more forums to come back in. Hopefully, we'll have that. Uh that was one of the benefits. It's some more there.
So she needs 300 more too.
Ms. Whiteout, is that is that accurate, that number?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we are very. Close. We probably would need less than 100 to ensure that all of our students are one to one. Um we do, though, utilize iPads for some of our younger kids. Um but we would be really close to being able to outfit um all of our students.
I'm asking Ms. Bonner, Mr. List, I'm maybe I'm confused. I thought last year we were. We were exceeded the one to one or is that do we? Or am I misremembering where we were last year?
We were able to get one to one in our upper grades, sorry Shane. Um. But our lower grades, okay, too, mainly um utilize the iPads. Um and those are about five to 10 per class depending. Um but our upper grades were were mainly one to one. But um due to loss of computers, due to the. Functioning of some computers because of the overuse of them during um during COVID times, we we've had to replace or replenish them.
And we were not uh one to one at upper um either. Uh we did check out a good portion of computers. Some did come back damaged. And the challenge for us last year was we had gotten into an agreement with a company that um did not deliver devices until. The end of May. And it was about 325 devices that we received. Um and so we were able to use this for testing, thankfully. Uh we really needed those for when we had all the students to to one to one. As Spiner shared, there was some inevitable loss with the uh 200 or so computers that we had checked out to students as well as damage. Upon their return. And even. Without that damage and and use, they were uh outdated in full transparency.
Okay, no, thank you. Ms. Allen, it sounds like we have our first lot of them that uh. We get to go to them in on our budget to figure out how to get these schools more laptops.
So Maggie, uh what do you need from us at this point in the board?
Um this was really just presented for um for your information. We've had other boards who have approved it. So I mean, if if you'd like to to say that this is okay, we we just would like to know that you're okay with the plan as we have laid it out.
Okay, cool. Donna, any perspective on this plan from a legal perspective?
I agree with Maggie. You could go either way. Some boards have um uh actually had a motion indicating their approval. I don't have any concerns about it. I think it's consistent with current law. And there may be some value since you've already you've discussed it and put this much effort to to vote on it. And let Charter Schools USA know that um that you're good with it.
Okay. Good deal. So what I'm hearing is that we're good with this. We can vote on it. Um. I'm fine with that. Anyone on the board care to make a motion about the mobile learning plan just shared?
Beth's come. I'll make a motion to agree. I'll second it.
Thanks, Beth. Thank you, Beth.
Jessica?
Yes.
Uh Kendall?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, sir.
And again, I'm checking to see if Chad fell off the call in his back. I do not see him. All right, uh Martin, I believe that uh would conclude the business that I had for the board this evening.
Okay, good deal. So one more one more section. Let's just do it.
Our principals, uh we've got two schools that are in session currently. I have a feeling the next question is, when are parents going to find out, you know? Or when can they expect to find out if there are any changes in protocol? Um is that something the principals are willing to share at this point?
Shane, do you want to go first? You would like for me to go first?
From my understanding from the um information that was shared tonight was that the decision with the healthcare professionals and then in consultation with the state team. Um while I would love to just rattle off my answer, at this time, I have not had an opportunity to clear that with the state team. Uh and so I would ask for the time to complete my due diligence before making that announcement.
I think that is a COVID response team on Friday. So we had two communications ready. One saying nothing would change, one saying something would change and what that something would be. And the correct communication is prepared to go out after this meeting concludes.
Uh and Shane, Kim, remember, it's also with the the local health department as well. I know that was in the the motion, just not just on you or. With the nurses and CSUSA, it's local health department as well.
And and uh to Kim's point, uh Ms. Page, and I do have a communication drafted uh pending approval.
Okay. Good, Beth.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Good, good. Yeah. So I would ask that just um various variables that are in place. So thanks to you guys. No principals, nurses, we support you. We stand right next to you in whatever decision is to be made to keep our kids in the building. In faith, in person, education is what we want. That's the backbone of what. We do. That's what you guys are all fantastic at. So just know we stand right behind you, right next to you in every single decision you make. Um you need to hear that from the board, okay?
Martin, I had one more thing, if you don't mind, before we just light up the information that you shared. And this is for all of our schools and all of the folks that are watching. At each one of ours over, we have adults that care about children in the building. So I would like all the parents who have probably tuned out by now because they didn't hear the announcement. Before, but if they're still watching, talk with your child if they have any feelings. Uh we have counselors in. Every school. We have uh social workers in some of our school. We have principals that care. We have teachers that care. There's an adult that. If there's anyone that um is not feeling socially, as you shared earlier, that's the last thing that we want for any of our children.
Appreciate. Okay. So Mark, the only piece I would like to add here um is just next meeting, we meet again in 10 days, I believe. So I want to have a next meeting section right here, just to go down to make sure we're very clear on what will and will not be discussed at that meeting. To make sure you guys are clear on deliverables and we are clear and we come ready to engage. So we talked about the protocol. Um the protocols will go out in the next 12 hours is what we were told earlier. We're going to the board are going to receive a weekly update on what's the state of the schools in regards to COVID positive cases and quarantine. We're going to have a forum each week for our parents to engage directly with school nurses, principals. Um we emphasize the nervous harassment piece to August. I think Wayne and Beth. Allen are on that one. Um are there any? Other items that anyone else on the board or Donna would like addressed and. To make sure that we hit at the next meeting.
Martin, this is Donna. I don't have anything to add to that list, but in light of the conversations you've had. Do you want to do anything to make sure that the board is aware, Mr. List and Ms. White were. Saying about the due diligence they need to now do before they issue a decision. But do you want to get some clarity around and making sure that? That as soon as any of those decisions that go out, based on the discretion that you've just given them, that you at least know what it is?
Sure. What would you? Do you recommend just is this a copy in an email? Is it a?
I would say whatever is easiest or most comfortable for them, but I think it's going to be a lot easier for board members to. Kind of process any of the information you're getting if you actually know what. Decision they issued.
Yeah, that makes that makes sense. I mean, to does anyone on the board have a you obviously want to be aware?
Principals can just tell you what they're prepared to do.
Yeah, I just tell you, by the end of the day tomorrow, I would expect that we would communicate to the board uh what is happening at uh at our at our schools. That we would have a an update uh for the board uh as to each individual school by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that makes sense. So basically, what I heard was a direct communication from CSUSA regarding regarding the individual decisions at each school. And then subsequently, if there is any change in that status, the same thing would occur.
Absolutely.
All right. Is that good school community?
Correct.
All right. Cool. Any other board members want anything else addressed at the board meeting next two weeks, whenever, next Wednesday? Okay. And Donna, I think the only other thing we discussed was a proposed agenda switch, which if we could discuss that next Wednesday, that would be fantastic. Making the agenda a bit more consolidated for these meetings so the principals don't have to prepare 97 pages.
Um and I'm sorry, Martin, ma- um you also talk. Talked about the fact that, as I understood it, I think from Maggie, is the welcome.
It was protocols and. A moment ago, but we're talking welcome backpack it, the protocols, yes.
Yeah, I I would. I don't want to um belabor the evening for myself or anybody else, but. I would appreciate an opportunity maybe to see that. I think I've seen a version and I have feedback on a couple of things. I'm happy to follow what. With Maggie and or Mark on that perhaps. Perhaps as soon as the meeting's over.
Okay.
I'd rather have that conversation now than, you know, after the. Pack it goes out and then we're.
Yep.
Absolutely. Do you want to? Just stay on after everything shut down, Donna?
I can do that.
Okay.
All right. Any other board members, anything else you want to address next Wednesday or are we good to go? All right. Thanks. Thank you, Mark, for driving the ship tonight. We appreciate you and thanks all. The principals, nurses, admins, and everybody watching paying attention. Thanks for every single thing you are doing. And uh please make sure you take care of yourselves.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Beth.
Beth owns that. You know that, guys.
Yep.
Will you get a second?
A second.
Thanks, Beth.
Okay, Jessica?
Yep.
Uh Kendall?
Yes.
Dana?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Wayne?
Yes.
And Martin?
Yes, sir.
Amazingly, that motion passed.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Down at 8:40. Thank you.